Available for on demand viewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room pick up the noise of paper and other rustling objects. Further, be aware that the microphones can pick up side conversations. We will begin with a roll call. Who you saw this?
Mr. Cliff Strachan.
Brian Jones.
George Handley.
David Nagle.
Elizabeth Newarkin.
Gary Luntz.
David Hardy.
Chris Sewell.
Bjorka Christi.
Wayne Parker.
Isaac Paxman.
And we are going to excuse right now your steward, K. W. E. R. Scott Henderson is saying the opening prayer. Thank you, Scott.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day in Provo and thank you for this opportunity to meet with civic leaders to discuss the future of our community. We ask for your blessing and wisdom and insight on everyone that we will do what is best for your community. And we ask for the blessings of health and happiness on our city. In Jesus' name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Scott. I'd like to remind those in attendance that although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those seated at the council table may speak or ask questions unless otherwise allowed by the chair. We will begin with item number one, a discussion regarding the public comments received from the draft environmental assessment and an update on the final environmental assessment in preparation for the proposed land and water conservancy fund topic conversion. Thomas, you're going to start us.
Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on where we're at with the conversion process for Tim Kuanis Park. We have released, actually, we've addressed all the, received and addressed all the comments that were given on the first, on the initial draft environmental assessment. And that, because of the changes that were made, under LWCF rule, we were required to, again, release it for another 30-day period. And that was done on October 3rd. And so we'll be, we're right in the middle of that, that comment period. And I just wanted to go over the, what we, what we updated in the, in the EA for this revised draft EA. And really, these points, really, the first one will be, is we gave some clarification and emphasis on the, really, the purpose and need of this conversion. And there was, there's four points. And the first one is that Provo School District needs more room for athletic fields. You know, what was really the driver behind this conversion? State guidelines indicate that Tim Kuanis, that Tim U. High School, based on the population, based on the student count, that campus should be 52 acres, based on state education guidelines. And right now, it's only 29 acres. Thus, helping to us understand, really, the need for that additional space that they're asking for. That additional 10 acres would then get them up to around 39 acres, which is still well below what guidelines are asking for. Provo School District needs to own and manage the property because of, there's a lot of issues behind that, just logistics, safety. It just makes a lot, makes, makes sense. Also, another purpose, another need is to address the potential Title IX concerns that hasn't gone away, and they're being proactive with that. And the other are the LWCF compliance issues. As we've gone through this process, there's other compliance issues that have come, you know, come to light. One of them is the actual onsite well. That was done after the site was purchased, and because it's not a recreation use, it can, that, that needs to be addressed. We're not intending to move the well, but that would, but that, that compliance issue is there. Again, the other compliance issues that we're dealing with is the encroachment of property, of the residential property in the southeast corner. We've got the cell tower that's on the site, the issues with the baseball field. There's a myriad of issues that we want to, that we want to resolve. So, one of the, one of the comments in the, to the EA is why, why are the 11 alternatives? Why aren't, they, the question was, were all of those considered as replacement sites? Really, the reason for those 11 alternatives was the due diligence that the school district did prior to them coming to the city, asking for Tim Kuanis Park. That was really the reason, just to give, the reason we kept them in there was really just to provide that background of what background worked, what due diligence has gone, has happened that's brought us to this point. Some other concerns were the flooding, you know, that was in the early 80s. The stormwater division in the Public Works Department has addressed that. We've included that in the EA. Really, there will be things that, you know, if any type of structure were to be built in that area, there's a lot of issues that would need to be resolved, just because of a potential debris flow, things like that. And then we took that, you know, concern seriously and investigated what needed to be done there. We've included that letter in the EA. Also, there was a letter from Superintendent Rattell that was included in this update. And in that letter, the, the school board expressed a willingness to explore and negotiate something recordable against the property if this conversion process goes through and is, and is approved. And I know that's one of the, one of the main concerns of the neighbors, and that's something that, that the school has expressed to do, is to explore and, and negotiate something recordable. What that actually is, is not going to be done, and, and they're not, there's, the school district's not willing to negotiate at this time until the conversion is actually done and, and if it actually is approved. There's some concerns about the, the well onsite. That was addressed in this, in this update. There are protections that are, that are necessary and that are, that are required to be adhered to with that, regarding that well, how close structures can be built to that. And that any type of, you know, construction or within that area, there has to be a plan in place that the, that the Public Works Department agrees to, and that would, they would have to go through if that was the case. There were also some concerns about the, on the replacement site down in southwest Provo, southwest Provo, about the youth lady tresses, some algae blooms, mosquito concerns, and those were all addressed. What's interesting is that, that youth lady tress area only equates to about 2,500 square feet of area, so it's, it's, it's less than a tenth of a percent of the site and can be easily mitigated and worked around. We've, were required to survey the site for three years to see if they actually bloom and are actually there. We've done it for two years now, and they have not been identified. So, once that, we're still going to do that for a third year, but that's been, that's been addressed. One of the other concerns was why can't a baseball field and softball field be built on Canyon, on the Canyon Road park space? We addressed that further, and as we've explored that further, with the roadway that's going, going through there, a baseball field actually doesn't fit with the roadway going through, with the property that it takes. It just, it, it doesn't work. So, that's why we've eliminated that as an alternate as well. So, really, the next steps, we'll receive the, and review the final comments, prepare the final EA, and present that to, to you on November 13th for a vote via a resolution to, to send to the National Park Service. It will then be submitted to them for review, and we're looking at around, looking for them to make a decision and approval February, March of, of 2019. Are there any questions that you have? Again, I appreciate this process that you've, and your patience. It is a long process, and we're, we're getting close and look forward to seeing this through.
Thomas, so what's the process after, so the National Park Service weighs in? So, they say yes, what happens, and if they say no, what happens?
So, there may be some, some back and forth as they review it. And if they can't come to a consensus, they can say no. The National Park Service can say no.
When you, when you say back and forth, what does that mean?
So, they're going to review this environmental assessment. They're going to review the documents that are required to submit. There may be some minor changes back and forth, some clarification that's needed. They're between us and them. So, it won't come back to a public comment period. It's just kind of the, the, the background administrative process that it goes through. They could say no. It's, it'll be either, in the end, it'll be either a yes or a no, that they can, that we can dispute.
And then, so then what happens?
Once, if it's a yes, then the, the property negotiations can happen, and that's when, you know, the, the willingness and, you know, exploring something recordable against the property, what that, what that transaction looks like can happen with the city and the, and the school district.
And if they said no, we would be stuck with the status quo and, and, I mean, I guess we cross that bridge?
Yeah, we cross that bridge when we get to it.
I, I think I saw the letter from Keith Rattell. Can you remind, but it's been several weeks since I think I saw it. I can't remember specifically what his statement was about the...
I can read the paragraph if you'd like. Says, "As you know, a great concern to the board is the purported federal requirement to pay best and highest use value when serious restrictions are also requested to be placed against the property, that in any other deal would certainly decrease the purchase price. Even so, the board is willing to explore and negotiate something recordable against the property, such as a deed restriction in connection with the purchase of the park. The final agreement with this city is expected to address future use and access, details of which are yet to be determined." And it says, "Alternately, the district is willing to look at purchasing only a portion of the park, leaving Provo City as the owner of the land on which the well and current playgrounds sit. This section option, this second option might also be a viable solution for the city's consideration." And he goes on to say, "Just because they have, we haven't had an actual conversion approval, just the, it's really not, they're not willing to negotiate on more specifics at this time."
So, if, if the decision comes back as a yes, then it comes before the city council again to make the formal approval of the, of the sale based upon whatever is recordable? I mean, in other words, I just want to be clear that I'm, we're going to be, we're going to be weighing in and deciding definitively on the sale based upon terms that have been agreed upon between the city and the school board at that point.
Correct.
Okay. So, you mentioned the option, yeah, that not all the property is sold where the, where the well and playground are. Is that something that the feds would have an opinion on? Would they say all the property?
I think, and this is just my understanding, my opinion, the whole site would be converted. And then I would, if that was the case, if that's what was agreed to, you know, between the city and the school district, then that, that, that southwestern portion and maybe the well site within the, may be purchased back. That's, to me, seems the cleanest and the best way to go about it, but that's...
So, we're only dealing with the conversion. We are not dealing with anything as far as, does this property work compared to this? We're not dealing with prices. How we're dealing with, will this convert?
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's been, yeah, I, you know, it's been a little confusing, and hopefully we've been able to clarify that, or this. Any other questions?
How, I know that we've got issues with the purchase of the other, the converted, conversion property. Those have come up in July, if I remember right.
June.
June 1st. So, we have to answer some kind of answer if we're going to use this towards that.
Correct. And, you know, February, March, hopefully those, those negotiations can start, and we can have that in place by that time that that's, that's due.
And those negotiations, will those have any effect on our ability to use that?
That money?
That, I mean, that, to purchase that park. Is it much of it? I know it's a couple million dollars, or?
It's required to be used to purchase another property. If that...
So, if they delay, if they're going back and forth, and you're getting closer to June?
Then we, then we have to decide something different? If you wanted to keep that, or we just have to let it go?
That's something that, like, that's a conversation that we'll bring up as we, if we get close to that.
If we get, if that...
We'll have to look at, at options of how we're going to, how we're going to look at that. But our hope is that that doesn't happen.
Yeah. We, we, with the deal we got on that, we can't let that go.
If, if, I can speak for the school district. I think if, if the conversion happens and it's, it's a go and we're going to sit down and negotiate, I don't think we're going to want to drag our feet very long either.
Okay.
So, I don't know how much comfort that gives you, but I think if you have a deadline that needs to be met, we'll do everything we can to ensure that that negotiation process meets that deadline.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Thomas.
You're welcome.
Is there any, any other questions? Anything you two want to weigh in on? Review three? We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to item number two, a discussion on the proposed language for the resolutions supporting housing affordability in U. D. D. A. And I think, basically, we started off with this discussion last week, if I remember right, at this, at the council meeting, and it was brought back for a little more discussion today. Is there any further discussion that wants, that we want to talk about this? We have the new resolution in front of us with a few changes.
So, I remember, I don't have it coming, but I think it was line 40 in the whereas.
Yep, okay.
And in there, it talks about, we would, we'd do regulatory barriers and fees, dollars. Yeah, and we're all about reducing regulatory barriers, but the fees are mentioned in there, and we've removed fees. I didn't have fees, whatever, from our document, so I didn't know if it was appropriate to also remove here, lest we imply something that we really aren't open to do.
Thank you. I, I agree with that. I'd support that.
So, that's my motion to remove and fees, those two words.
It's on line 40.
I'll second that. Any discussion about that? Because I know that we're going to have a big discussion. We start on Thursday. It's our final discussion on impact fees, and they are not going down. And so, I think we need to look at that and see what direction we're going. We will have that discussion as a council, but the recommendation, not going down. Any other discussion? We'll call it.
First, John.
Do you want to X that out?
Want to X that out, so we can see what we're looking at here. Remove regulatory, what, just and fees.
Just take that off. Is it approved? Let's call for a vote then, before we X completely out. Those in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously with just that here and that. Okay?
So, everyone, everyone saw the change from insured to worked towards both.
Yeah, that's good.
So, I, I think the word insured is guaranteed. We really can't...
Any other questions or concerns? This will be coming to the meeting tonight then for final vote on this resolution. Okay, we'll go to item number three, a discussion for requests to rezone portions of the East Bay Golf Course, Regional Shopping Center, O.C. SC3, and planned industrial commercial P.I.C. designation to public facilities, East Bay Neighborhood. Josh, it's like this.
Hello, thank you. This is a pretty simple proposal. To make it clear, essentially, what is happening is all of the portions of the golf course that will remain golf course after the construction of the medical school and the relocation and construction of the three holes to the southeastern portion of the course. All of that area that will be golf course in the future, this application zones that public facilities. Currently, the existing SC3 zone at the northwest corner of the site extends beyond the planned boundaries of the medical school. And on the southeast corner of the site, the location of the former Cooney plant and a little bit extending to the west of that, it was zoned industrial. This proposal simply takes all of the property that will remain as golf course after the completion of the medical school and zones that public facilities to communicate the intent, the future intent that that remain public facilities on the golf course. This application was brought to us by Dixon Holmes under the direction of members of the council, and staffs recommended the planning commission that they forward a motion of a, a recommendation of approval to you as the city council, and they did so. And I'll, you can answer any questions.
Hello, we resolved that to Regional Shopping Center when we were thinking about target, correct?
Correct, I...
And so now, we're just putting it back to where it was and hopefully keeping it there for a while anyway? Just to let people know what we're doing.
Right. Really, those policy determinations are your purview, and I think that's what this application communicates. It will require, as we noted in the staff report, some changes to the general plan in order for the general plan and zoning to be consistent. We still recommended approval of this item, knowing that it needed to move forward, and Dixon Holmes from Economic Development is actually, are working on submitting an application to make the necessary amendments to the general plan to remove references to the SC3 zone specifically and the planned retail development there. The 60 acres of the zoned SC3 currently was actually specifically called out in the general plan to be developed as a regional shopping center and zoned SC3. So, those amendments will come to you shortly to make the, those adjustments to the general plan, to make it its policy statements intent with the, its policy intent statements line up with the zoning on the ground after this amendment.
Scott, Doug, tell us, would you mind taking a minute talking about the progress upon the three holes and how we're coming on that, the change, changes that are happening out at the golf course?
Could I just ask a question about this?
Yeah.
Before that? I just, so, so the policy, East Bay Neighborhood Policy 6 and 9, you're saying that, that, so that's not, we're not voting on that now?
No.
But you're, the, the planning commission was proposing that those be eliminated from the general plan?
Yes, and staff made that recommendation in the staff report.
Is that, is that, is that one way of, I mean, it is another way of saying what we're doing. We're making it less likely that the golf course would be moved elsewhere.
Yes, this walks, or gets rid of any statements in the general plan relative to creating a regional shopping center in that area. It doesn't make any direct statements regarding the future of the golf course, but I think it makes...
It doesn't.
...an implied statement that since we're getting rid of this prospective zoning that was put there before development to entice or to facilitate development. That going away, I think, does convey your intent.
That, that seems more, I mean, that seems in the spirit of the public discussion about it, so I'm fine with that.
They presented to the Parks and Rec Board on Thursday, which was very good, and if you wouldn't mind just kind of giving a quick overview of that.
You bet. So, kind of in the sequence of the project, the agreement was signed by both parties on the transfer of property. Part of that sale is on the medical school side, is to mitigate those three holes onto the Cooney property. So, we have, we were able to get our designer under contract, and we have been consulting with the medical school leadership all the way through. We're actually having our first meeting with the group tomorrow afternoon and starting that process. The consultant, we have actually had the request for proposals in January, but, you know, going through this process, it's taken a couple, couple months, or, you know, through this process. So, he actually comes hitting the ground running, we feel, so we're going to be excited about that, that meeting tomorrow. Medical school leadership is part of that also. So, this is a project partnership that we have here, and then hoping to move as quickly as possible, because we understand the interest on the other side after we get those three holes playable and our, our golfing public is able to utilize those, then the medical school will be able to start its project then too. So, all this was covered in the agreement that everybody reviewed with the medical school and involving the golf course.
And, and they rerouted some of the holes, just making them, and it looked like a fun course to still be playing and be the course.
Yeah, I think it's a new identity for the course. We have fixed some routing issues that we've had, so a little easier to navigate at East Bay. So, you know, taking a project that, with this, but I, I think, you know, improving the golf course is part of this process too. That's our focus.
Dixon, do you want to talk?
I think Scott summarized it very well.
Okay. And I understand we made a few requests for a few changes at some point?
Yeah, so the, the medical school developer will be bringing a, and working with community development will be bringing at some point a zone change for the portion that will be medical school. That will be changing or proposed change to a healthcare facility zone. And what was the nature sunshine parcel, I believe, will be a... Campus mixed use. We allow for residential. Those require zone change, and also, as Josh alluded to, the underlying general plan for those areas will also be appealed back. Interestingly enough, for the healthcare facility zone, the underlying general plan is a public facility, so actually, the golf course public facility area for the general plan will be increased, and I'm not sure what the general plan designation is for the, for the nature sunshine piece, but that will also be consistent with the mixed use.
So, we will have opportunities in the future, maybe to deliver some of those plans?
Yeah, the zone change is coming in.
This is kind of solidifies what we do.
And this is consistent with what was talked about in the public meetings back in January as far as peeling back the zoning, and now we're also have the general plan to be consistent with zoning also.
Any other questions for Josh, or if we're... Hey, thank you very much. We're looking forward to, we're looking forward. This will also be coming to our council meeting tonight. This will also be coming, um, to our council meeting tonight. We'll go on to item four, a discussion on the request to amend the general plan map regarding land west of I fifteen, freeway and south of Provo River, Lakewood, Sunset, Provo Bay, and what you found the issue with. And you're not, right, you're welcome for being here.
I didn't lie. So as this map proceeds through your review, there are a couple specific issues we'll need you to weigh in on. There are two places I think where the map conflicts in some degree with the goals and policies that were most recently passed in two thousand seventeen. One is that the, those goals and policies say that the overall density should be four units to the acre, and there are definitely areas where we exceed that. All of these darker colors exceed four units to the acre. L D R goes up to twelve and M V R goes up to thirty. The reason the committee, the steering committee, increased densities in notes like that is because it was seen, it was an offset to reducing densities in areas like this. This area got reduced from four units to the acre gross calculation to four units to the acre net. Remember, we looked at some land use, some maps of the subdivision, I've got those maps here if anyone wants to see them again, of how four units net and four units net versus net translate to some properties. But what it essentially means is that four units to the acre gross, meaning generally with a lot of six thousand square foot lots in the development, which the neighborhood has not reacted well to every time we've taken, every time a developer's taken a plan like that out to a neighborhood meeting. The four units to the acre net ends up at about two point eight units to the acre. So you don't have any lots less than ten thousand square feet. So that's the difference between those two. The steering committee recommended lowering that to a net calculation, so they offset that by increasing density in areas where it made sense. And the other issue that we would need you to weigh in on is down here in this corner across Lakeview Parkway, a commercial node has been added. There's an actual goal in the goals and policies that say, don't develop south of the Parkway. The reason why you see as much commercial potential as you see here is that was a conscious decision recommended by the steering committee to offset the financial liability this much residential has. This is four thousand and six residential units now, and as you know, residential development tends to be a money pit for sakes. Property taxes don't offset the demands they have for services. These commercial nodes are saying that we see potential for neighborhood commercial there, and we don't believe all of these would develop, but neighborhood commercial. These are intended to be regional commercial uses, S C three zones. You added some S C three zoning recently over here in this area, you rezoned P I C to S C three. This would pick up about another sixty acres of the S C three zone potentially. We have so few interchanges in Provo and so few opportunities for regional big box type retail, we felt like that was important even with it being south of the Parkway. The things to remember about this plan is time and time again, we were trying to balance the interests of very diverse interest groups, who one of the things that don't necessarily align with each other. So one of those interest groups was calling for preservation of agriculture. The current general plan doesn't call for any preservation of agriculture north of the road. The current general plan says all of this is four units to the acre or airport related. This shows a couple nodes of agriculture here and here, but even with us showing those on this map, it is our anticipation that the text of the plan would say, when these property owners decide to stop farming, that's largely Harry McCord, that's largely Mr. Hinckley, John Hinckley, when they decide to stop farming, that they would be, it's anticipated that they would receive the same airport related zoning. This crosshatch means in the airport related area. This area is outside of airport related, so we would expect this to go to the same R E S as, as these notes here. There's been a lot of added to this plan in terms of parks and trails and open space. That's a new park. That's obviously a new park. We received some pushback on this with people saying that, well, if you don't play some kind of field sport, then it's not an advantage to you. It's my understanding from the parks department that we're anticipating neighborhood type park amenities within that. So it is an asset and an amenity to the people who live on the west side. All these dotted lines you see along the major roads and along Dry Creek here, those are future trails. We thought, it could have made more sense to have the trail space going along streets instead of through backyards. Through backyards creates blind spots and it's hard to regularly keep control of it, but along streets, it's much easier for us to make sure that it's safe and passable. As, as you know, this is just the next step in the west side plan. As we've gone forward with these neighborhood plans, we have seen to us that the neighborhoods have had a hard time getting their arms around, taking the entire plan and bringing it forward to the city council and saying, here, please adopt this. It seems like the last few plans have been a little bit unwieldy trying to go through the accrual process. So we thought this time, let's break the plan in half. Let's first concentrate on a land use map, let's see if we can get that approved, and then we'll write the text of the plan that would reflect this. When we went out to a neighborhood meeting about six months ago, and a form of this map that was generated by the steering committee was presented, it seemed that that idea made sense to the people that were there, and we had about sixty or seventy people there, to separate the process into a couple steps that are more manageable and understandable. So this is probably the third version of this map since the steering committee came up with a map that they, that we took out to the neighborhood meeting. I'll spend some time in the meeting tonight talking about the steering committee and the process we went through and how we got to this point. And I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the things in the plan that you really need to pay attention to and we need your input on. I'll stop talking there unless you have any questions, or I'll keep going, whatever you'd like me to do.
Questions on the south, we, we still have that in plan to vote development on the south except for that one little commercial. I know at one point we talked potentially about some kind of agritourism on the south side, is that?
I think that would still be permissible, as long as it's agriculture related, it's not residential. We're trying not to force uses out there that will be very hard to serve through utilities. Residential on the south side of the street will be difficult to do, but agritourism would be great. Agricultural uses are fine.
I, I seem to recall vaguely a presentation you made pretty early on in the year, and I thought I remembered more agricultural open space in, in the, where all that residential is. Am I misremembering that?
I can remember all the versions of this we've had.
Is it maybe where the regional park now is? Because I know the regional park wasn't proposed back then. But I thought there was some agriculture right next to the airport.
Well, this felt currently zoned agriculture. Most of this area is still zoned agriculture, and this map won't propose any zone changes. This won't initiate any zone changes. As the agriculture committee, as I've talked with members of their committee, what I've suggested is that most low hanging fruit for them to go after for ag preservation would be the Hinckley Farm, because it's the largest piece that's in single ownership. And I understand that they're trying to help it happen.
Okay, but maybe that's what I'm remembering, because I thought I remembered it being right next to the airport. So can you describe what their, what the agricultural commission's dealings about this are? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this.
Well, I'm sure that, I would think that they would like to see more agricultural preservation. And from a more sustainable perspective, yeah, what would be more sustainable is to have, you know, all this in agriculture and then much higher density in areas that are appropriate for higher density. Financially, that would be a more sustainable plan, but that would not receive popular support on the west side. Again, this is a compromise of a lot of interest groups and a lot of voices, and I mean, this is a big balancing act.
So having attended virtually all meetings of agricultural official. I think you have to be realistic, and I think they are being realistic, that you have to find someone who wants to stay in the business, who wants an easement on their property. So we did take a tour of one property just north of the, that's gone, it's a Christian Center. And so the Nature Conservancy came and looked at it, and that was a possibility, it's still a possibility, that you'll be able to bring those two parties together and kind of guarantee the future of that property with an easement. But if you don't have a way to buy up the development rights or buy up the property outright, then you can't force people to do what they don't want to do. I do believe there's opportunities, people that, given the right circumstances, would come in and do micro farming and take advantage of a farming opportunity, but there's also issues with water that can't be ignored, whether it's the fact that we don't irrigate or supply irrigation water like we used to, or the fact that the groundwater levels have changed due to others' drought or drought, whatever you want to say. So there's practical considerations here. And as much as I love agriculture and like to see it, I'm not sure what else we can do at this point.
Members of the Carter family own quite a bit of acres on the west side, and what they've told us is between the west side connector, Lakeview Parkway, essentially acting as a dyke in terms of hindering just groundwater from seeping up from the lake and city, the city wells that are much deeper than theirs. When the city starts pumping the water from our wells, their wells go dry. Between those two factors, they're saying it's become very difficult for them to get enough water on their crops to keep crop there. Nothing like it was years ago when it just, there was always just enough water there, eight, ten to twelve inches below the ground. It's not that way anymore.
So this is, this has always been an area of confusion for me, so I'm hoping to get a little clarity. So we've talked about the, the back function, you know, intended or unintended of the Parkway. You just mentioned city wells drawing down the groundwater. Was there also, was there a city decision to no longer supply irrigation water? Help me understand that, the process behind that, timeline of that.
Yes, somebody from engineering may know more than me, so if I start to get wrong, please jump up. My understanding is that we were leasing irrigation water to farmers out there, and we stopped, those leases, or stopped leasing it to them.
We still actually provide some, there's, there's a turnout on Columbia Lane near the fire station, and there still is some areas that still receive water from the Provo River through city irrigation. But the broad use of irrigation, especially in the downtown area, that stopped in ninety seven, that may be what they're, what you're referring to.
And I have very well reminded you referring to that. I even recall, it seems like even after I moved into the city, like the water in front of Pioneer Park was, was removed and that feature was removed and that, did that have something to do with, because that was later than ninety six or ninety seven?
Yeah, so there, so, I think the part that you're talking about, that used to be an open channel that was irrigation, and it was part of a, you know, I won't call it systematic, but it's just, you know, the reduction of your, of agriculture on the west side, and it slowly, you know, heated less and less. So Richard Snyder, I met with him a couple months ago, and he reported that there's still, we still take water out of the turnout on Columbia Lane, and I don't remember the number of users downstream from that point, but he did give me some, he gave me some indication that there's, it's, it's reusing.
Yeah. So is that, is that being driven by farmers who are saying, yeah, I'm not interested in renewing this lease until the city responds? Or as the, as the city said, you know, we're not going to lease you anymore?
It's, it's, it's almost completely driven by the farmers, you know, the city has, I don't think there's any interest in, certainly from public works to, you know, to reduce the use out there. So as long as they have the ability to get it through ditches, you know, because it's a series of ditches, and so, you know, upstream user may decide to develop settlements like that, and it may affect somebody else. We, we have no motive to reuse irrigation use out there.
And we're not, from what I understand, we're not taking rights from anyone by, by stopping the water. It's not, we're not, they're not losing any right that they have. It's just something that we have leased, and all of a sudden the water is just not as much, and so it may not be a mandate to this.
It's a transition from urban development to residential, which is a transition. We've already used it on the ditches, so the ditches are being maintained, it's more expensive to maintain, the liability of the ditches, people are not creating.
More evaporations. Who owns those ditches then? Is it the farmer themselves that are?
Irrigation companies.
Irrigation companies.
And so as, as the number of users start to diminish, the responsibility for those ditches falls on fewer and fewer people, and they have to maintain ditches much further away from their property now.
It's been my experience that water rights like that are unbelievably sacred in the state, and you can't just cut somebody's water off or interfere with their water. Is that about right?
Yes.
Could you, are you, tell me about the, the overall housing units balance that you've just described? So with the, with the M V R and L D R areas that you proposed there, are we getting, I mean, I know we're fighting, you know, neighborhood feelings on higher density housing, but are we, are we avoiding just laying out more sprawl? Are we going to be able to look at this development and say, yeah, this is, this is going to bring in more affordable housing into Provo, this is going to provide more housing period for the demand that's there right now with the shortage we're facing? I'm just anxious that we don't commit the error of, you know, just laying out a bunch of residential units and perpetuate the, the problems that we're currently having.
So, so members of the, of the committee felt like lowering that density to get bigger lots was important because they've experienced friends and neighbors in their neighborhood who have wanted to move up in housing, wanted a bigger lot, wanted to build up a third car garage, and they ended up having to move it out of Provo to find that. So lowering that density and having the bigger lots, they felt like there's a couple things. Number one, it keeps those residents in Provo that want to move up in housing and stay here, and it also raises our level of discretionary income. It seems like information provided by economic development to the committee at the very beginning of our meetings, and it was information provided to the department heads, is that one of the things that's holding back our commercial development is that our average income in Provo is low, and retailers look at that, they look at disposable income, they look at average income, and if it doesn't meet certain thresholds, it discourages them from coming. So the idea was by allowing for larger lots and larger homes would help keep people in Provo, that would boost up that average income and disposable income. We started this plan by trying to keep a balance of four units to the acre that the original general plan had, and our infrastructure planning has been anticipating. This plan with changes the steering committee and planning commission have recommended, this actually boosts that number by about five hundred units, okay? So we go from just under thirty-five hundred dwelling units to just over four thousand dwelling units. Now, this is an interesting statistics. Now, this is an interesting statistics. Fifty-six percent of the housing is the attached housing, but the attached housing is only on 9% of the land, the west side land.
Say that one more time, Bill.
Fifty-six percent of the housing this proposes, fifty-six percent of 4,006 dwelling units, is in the attached housing nodes. But the attached housing nodes are only 9% of the land area. And so, some have said, you're cramming too much multi-family down our throats, and others have said, you don't have enough multi-family out there to provide affordable housing. The two planning commissioners voted against this plan. That was their sentiment, there wasn't enough high-density housing, that the LDRs ought to be changed to MDR, and the MDR ought to be changed to HDR. Those would be significant increases in densities. Okay? So, again, this is, city planning is an unbelievable exercise in negotiation and.
What would that do to the numbers if that, if those changes, I mean, what are we looking at in terms of number differences? If you went from?
So, these 12, these zones go from 12 to 30. Those will go from 12 to 30. And that 30, we go from 30 to, I guess it goes up to 50? Or is it 80? I don't have my zoning, always been zoning ours, so everybody came straight from BYU.
So, several, several hundred more, maybe?
Yes. I can calculate that for you, have that answer to me.
I'm just, yeah, I'm curious about that.
I can calculate that out.
So, my only observation is if you take all the LDR and go with MDR, and take the MDR and put it to HDR, then the natural planning result is you phase it out, and so, then you're going to have to take adjacent property to the HDR and make it MDR down to LDR. I mean, you typically do that. And so, you would take property down by the MDR, and then it would go out to LDR, and then finally out to the residential. So, it would have a domino effect, in my opinion, if you were to up all of those.
We can scroll up to see that a little bit better.
Is there even, are there sufficient services available for that kind of density in that area? I mean, could we, could we even handle that much in terms of public services or sewer?
I messed up the last question, it was the public works wants to yell, oh.
If, this is a good exercise to have right now, because we need to know this right now. We're putting in the backbone right now.
So, this MDR node actually was suggested by Beth, and the rest of the committee thought it was a good idea, but I'll get, that right now, that is a trailer park in this area, and there are some post-World War II homes. The idea was to allow enough density there to allow redevelopment to that area, in the place that's close to the freeway, it's close to Center Street, it's close to park amenities and the river trail, it would help bolster a village center here. And again, her thinking was, let's increase this density here so that we can lower density in significant other places.
That's where the trailer park is now, right?
Yes. The trailer park here now, and there's an ROA campground that we just bought, Parks Department just bought, and is redeveloping into park amenities. Trailer park is there, World War II homes are there. So, the World War II homes are like 900 square foot homes on small lots.
So, years ago, we had discussions on the west side, and you can play through here from those and certain organizations that there weren't, that move up homes that would keep the families there long-term. And so, you mentioned that, and that's a very important part of the balanced neighborhood or community. And the existing homes, like, well, just most, most of them, not all, but a lot of the existing homes are, which I classify as starter homes. And so, bringing in the higher 10,000 square foot lot move-up home is actually a positive thing for the overall health and balance of the community. So, I think we need to look at not just what we're building, but what's there, and what kind of balance we're trying to achieve. I think you are, you are doing that with what is being proposed here. I like what's being proposed.
So, that MDR zone, HDR zone goes to 80 units to the acre, so we will 30 that.
Hey, just a quick question, just clarification. You talked about by having some LDR, some MDR that can offset and allow, and you kind of circled right there, the residential, you have 10,000 square foot lots there. Is it just in that central area, or are we talking everything that's yellow there?
Everything in that shade of yellow is that same.
Okay, but even up above Center Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's color coded that way, I'll read that. Same.
So, a question, Bill. You've gone through quite a bit, as with Beth and Ben, how do you feel about it?
Again, I think it's a good compromise, taking all these different interests into account. This should get us enough housing to get some commercial amenities on the west side. It, you know, tries to not ignore any of the interest groups, gives something to everyone. Is everybody happy? No, but sometimes that means, you know, it's a good compromise.
Why is there this one on corner of the US?
That's a subdivision. That's off spray. The off spray subdivision.
And what do you think of the, you think the density is, I mean, I know what's, I know, there's two parts to the question. You know, what does the neighborhood think is, what is possible politically versus what is ideal, I guess, maybe in terms of the density? I guess I'm just curious to know if you feel any lingering anxiety that the density could be improved a little bit with the right balance that Dave and you were talking about, but maybe with more.
Well, you did improve itself.
You did, yeah. I just wonder if you're satisfied with the improvement.
Yeah.
It's sufficient.
And I appreciate what you've done on this side of Center Street. As we go north, are we having opportunities for more LDR and MDR opportunities on that? Or is it pretty well going to be the residential that we've got there on the north side of Center Street? Even up higher?
Off map?
Is it all, yeah.
So, our study area ends at the Provo River.
Right. And so, that, but do we have more opportunity for the LDR and the MDR, or is it going to be all basically residential according, just a quick view?
I defer to the neighborhood chair from that area.
Do you know, is it something?
Sure.
Right now, you have Baratji Shores that has set a number of units that covers most of the rest of the area in Lincolnburg neighborhood. There have been some rungins in the neighborhood that want to improve the Baratji Shores plan to offset density on one side for higher density, and again, kind of follow this model a little bit more up in Baratji Shores. Of course, that would have to be a negotiation between neighborhood and Baratji Shores before transportation. There are areas that you could do higher density, where there'll be a fight up there. Again, you're changing from agriculture to residential, and that's always a hard transition, especially when you have along 2008 agricultural community who's starting to buy land down into Provo to preserve it as agriculture. So, it's the constant balance and fight between residential and Provo agriculture.
That's a, that's a battle for another day, I guess.
Well, you do have 400 townhomes coming in on the west side.
Right.
Just another kind of clarification, so you have dashlines, you said those are going to be trails. Are those going to be trails only, or roads and trails?
Roads and trails.
Okay. I just want to kind of throw out again, kind of a concern about making sure that our transportation network is interconnected or whatever, kind of that largest residential block there, it's almost central. You've got a road on one side, you've got a road on another, and neither, and it doesn't come through?
Yeah.
Right? Okay, and so, on either side, you know, east and west, you've got a road kind of mid-block and doesn't show there. I think I'd feel more comfortable if that road came through. And whether it shows up on this kind of map, or if it's just written into the policies or whatever, I'd love to see the next step down from these roads, these are all collectors.
Collectors arterials.
And the arterials, most of them are collectors. Whatever the next step down is, just kind of, I'd like to see some logic and some interconnectivity. I'm glad that we're getting these in, just as an example, 820 north, you know, there's talking about what's going to go on in the future, if there's going to be an interchange there or whatever. You go west of Geneva, and the road goes from 820 to 620 is the collector road, and there's real no good way to connect that. And so, I'm just hopeful that we can avoid things like that. There's too many times where, you know, one field gets sold for development, the roads go in, it makes sense for it, and it makes sense if the next parcel over will forever be agricultural, but it doesn't, it will eventually sell and be developed. And sometimes it feels like our roads outside of our collectors are piecemeal and don't interconnect. And so, I know there's some mechanisms in our vote already, but I just really hope that as this starts developing, that we really start looking at, you know, what happens when the next parcel over and next parcel over, so we get a good interconnected network.
Yeah, that's a good point. This is consistent with our current transportation master plan, but that's being updated by now. So, this may have to get tweaked depending on that transportation update. Only in this case and that case did we show local roads. The reason we showed these local roads here and there here is that, you'd be using the process of getting hold of that piece to move their ag operations from university out and about to this area. We wanted it to be very clear to BYU as they're moving forward, that these roads are expected to go in, and to put them on notice that we're expecting roads to be there, and if your property comes up against that, you may be building half a road. But those are the only local roads we're showing, everything else is. But I agree with your site, understanding you're saying I agree.
A small, just kind of off-road up since we've got a lot of people in the room. I don't think it's on this map, but if you, well, scroll down to the bottom, there's a frontage road, I assume it's in Scringle, maybe it's county land, that ends just before that on-ramp, so the bottom right corner, if you go down just a little bit more, there's that swing around on-ramp there here.
Right. It's the fishing access.
Fishing access? Yeah, it runs past the power poles or whatever. There's times where people in West Provo, you know, they've got a load that they want to take to the dump. If personally they could get on that road, then they don't have to get onto the freeway. And anyway, just, I want to plant that seed, because if that commercial area gets developed or whatever, having that connect, I think connectedness is helpful. And then the last thing that I wanted, because if you scroll to the top now of this map, the study area ended at the Provo River. Part of that includes the Provo River Trail, but part of, and part of what we see here, the Provo River Trail, that goes on to the north side, so it's technically out of the study area. But when we're looking at the kind of long range of planning of this area, I really think that, you know, asking ourselves, what do you see as the future for the Provo River Trail? And really, the corridor, if you get out onto the Provo River Trail, particularly west of Lake Shore Drive?
Lake Shore Drive?
Yeah, Lake Shore Drive, I think, Lake Shore Drive. It really gets rural, I don't know the best way to describe it. And the Provo River Trail kind of has a different feel and different sections of the city. And even between State Geneva Road and Lake Shore Drive, they're, you've got the river on one side, and you have backyards on the other. And it's, it's a very pleasant place to be, but there's something really special when you get out a little bit further, and kind of human habitation kind of falls away, and you do have some fields and just beautiful trees and whatnot. That's a spectacular area, and if there was a way that the city, if we decided that we would just have a policy to emphasize or prioritize that corridor, I think, I think, you know, working with people that are looking to do conservation easements, if you kind of say, hey, this is something that's important to the city as well, that might be a way. Maybe it's buffering with the zoning that we put in, say, yeah, you can buy this land, you can develop this land, but the first 50 feet, you know, can't be developed or whatever, you know, just some easements, and there's some buffers in there, we need that for other things as well, just to protect that corridor. I really think that it's, it's something special that, you know, can't be replicated once it, once it goes away. And in that spirit, looking at that, we have, it looks like, I assume that's an existing RA, some residential agricultures already zoned there, yeah, thank you. But north of that and west of that, we're showing residential, you know, perhaps if we decide that we want to prioritize that, perhaps more RA would be better there. And perhaps the tail of the RA that's north of the existing school there, the blue dot, perhaps swapping those, just again, trying to protect that corridor of the Provo River Trail there might make more sense. But really, the bigger policy question is, and it doesn't directly affect this, I guess nearly it does, you know, is this a priority for the city? Do we want to do something to protect the Provo River corridor?
And maybe we've got the right guys here to look at that. It's their turn to travel there.
Isn't the proposed restoration project already, we're sort of designating some of that area as protected, or?
Yes, yeah, it will. I think it's important to note, too, that our city limits line is about where the edges of those, you know, along the river where the residential is located. So, once we get beyond that, it's sort of the county's call. But beginning at Lake Shore Drive, I think, isn't that fair?
Kind of a rough boundary line.
Lake Shore Drive is kind of the boundary where the new Delta Restoration Project will be entertained. And again, I think we're anticipating there will be some trail amenities, boardwalk or otherwise through that area, too, that will help complement that. But again, that'll all be in federal ownership. And so, yeah, I think it's worth asking a lot of questions about the future of the trail of western Lake Shore Drive. Planning Department, the Recreation Department are working on a Provo River plan right now.
Okay. I just, I guess, want to voice my support, maybe other council members as well, if they want to, but to me, that's a priority. And we talked about, we're talking about balance, and I think this is a great balance, I think we struck a really good balance. But for me, that's one of the highest priorities as far as just to keep a very natural agricultural feel, that might be one of my top priorities.
One more question, I've got about the airport, industrial, commercial. That's the areas where we're, that's one of the sites that we're looking at for a sewer treatment plan. And I wonder how that affects some of the other opportunities that we have for airport use.
Site is identified as a potential site for wastewater treatment, actually south of.
South of the Parkway.
It's south of Lake Shore, okay.
Of Parkway.
Lakeview Parkway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
And again, I think that's in keeping with Bill's earlier statement in trying to prevent residential, I hope, you know, the Community Development Council looks at that, it's not residential use, but it looks like the purpose of the site for the treatment plan.
And we're going to rely on you to make sure that it doesn't get washed away in a wondery or.
It would be brought up significantly.
Yeah.
Let me just say, Mr. Chairman, if I can, this has been a Herculean effort by the neighborhood, the various stakeholders in the group, and certainly by our planning staff. And I just want you to know, among the neighborhood plans we've seen, this is, we thought Joaquin was tough. This one, the Joaquin Pales in comparison to how difficult this one's been. But Beth's been a great champion of working through this process, and she's taken a lot of slings and arrows from her neighborhood as well, trying to strike this balance that Bill's talked about. And so, it's been, it's been a phenomenal effort. Just want to let our staff know, we appreciate all you've done on this one.
Thank you. And I'll second that way, and that's, that was, that's great. Okay, do we have any?
Dave, do we have any deeper proposed decisions today? Okay, and you, I think everybody in that is consent. Thank you very much. One thing, just for your information, tonight at 7:30, it's time sensitive, we will begin a public open house on the pond, and we will be moving off the dice, down to the, down to the front, that area, and.